Welcome to Indianapolis’s first ever Town Hall meeting on Sickle Cell Disease. My name is Gary A. Gibson and I am the President and CEO of Martin Center Sickle Cell Initiative, the host for today’s historic event. On behalf of the nearly 300 Sickle Cell patients that we serve annually, and on behalf of our Board of Directors and our staff, I’m honored to have this opportunity to thank you for being here today. Dr. Adams, Dr. Kane, Dr. Hooper, Ms. Houlihan, thank you for sharing your valuable time with us. And to our patient advocates, thank you for agreeing to so unselfishly share yourselves and your stories with us. To Dr. Meyer, Dr. Moody, who has not yet arrived, thank you for being here and thank you for caring for our Sickle Cell patients. Welcome, welcome to you all. Too many times we hear people ask, “Why don’t I hear that much about Sickle Cell these days?” I think that there are a number of reasons why this is true. But rather than discuss the reasons why people feel that they don’t hear enough about Sickle Cell, I suggest that we put our focus on what we can do to ensure that they do hear about it going forward. This meeting is one way to do that. The primary purpose of this meeting is to share information about Sickle Cell disease’s impact on patients and families here in Indiana, and in doing so, recognize that its impact in Indiana is representative of its impact nationwide. This meeting is being held in conjunction with tomorrow’s 2016 Indiana Sickle Cell Conference. We certainly hope that we will see you all back here tomorrow to learn more about Sickle Cell, how doctors can improve treatments for their Sickle Cell patients, and how Sickle Cell patients and family members can learn more about the management of this difficult and challenging condition. Before we begin the program, I would like to ask that you hold, that, ask that you hold, uh, and hold your attention and give each of the speakers your undivided attention. Please save your questions for the question and answer session at the end of the presentation. Also, please mute your mobile devices. For those of you who would like to tweet or send out Instagrams, please use the hashtag #SCDTownHallIndy and couple that with hashtag #SickleCellFocus2016. Finally, I’m pleased to announce that these proceedings are being broadcast live on the home of our Sickle Cell Action Network Internet Radio Show, Radiomax.TV. Our thanks to Mr. Harold Bell, the owner of Radiomax.TV, for providing this service to the Sickle Cell community worldwide, free of charge. And now, it is my distinct honor to welcome Dr. Jerome Adams to the podium to give some brief opening remarks. Dr. Adams is the Commissioner of the Indiana State Department of Health and we count him as a valuable friend. He has helped us in many ways, and particularly in helping us get established what we call the Emergency Room Sickle Cell Education Project to try to ensure that emergency room providers do know the best ways to treat people with Sickle Cell. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jerome Adams.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here. I, I, I know that Gary said brief remarks, and he said that on purpose because he knows that I can get going and, and when I’m passionate about something, it can go on for awhile. And I’m passionate about being here today. I want to thank you all for the opportunity. I’ve got my phone because I also listened to him when he said to mute my phone, but I want to take a picture of you all so I can tweet it later. Because one of the most important things, and I was just on, on a radio interview outside discussing this, is that we raise awareness about Sickle Cell Disease. That, that’s really something we all can do today and moving forward to help us fight what we know is an uphill battle. So everyone smile, you’re about to be on Twitter. All right. So, uh, I want to start off by, by making just a few points about, um, Sickle Cell Disease in Indiana. We know it’s one of the most commonly, um, commonly genetically transmitted diseases, but it is a disease of many faces. It’s one of the most challenging to treat because it manifests in so many different ways from patient to patient, and that can make it difficult to diagnose and difficult to treat. It can be an economically devastating disease without support, and I know many of our, our patients and survivors with Sickle Cell can talk about that. It presents lifelong health burdens that result in excessive hospitalizations, in consequence, excuse me, in consequently excessive medical expenses that the majority of patients cannot afford to pay. And, uh, quick segue here, it’s important to note that Indiana is, is one of the, is the only state right now that, uh, received a waiver from, from HHS to, to access the Obamacare Medicaid Expansion Funds for our Healthy Indiana Plan. So whether you have Sickle Cell Disease or not, uh, you, you, if you don’t have insurance, you should look into the Healthy Indiana Plan. We now have over, uh, 350,000 people signed up for insurance who did not have it before we, we were able to start the Healthy Indiana Plan and expand it in January of last year. And the numbers show us that it is disproportionately helping people of color within our state. So again, important for you all to know whether you have Sickle Cell or not. We know Sickle Cell Disease is a psychosocial as well as a physical disease. So last year, when I was at the summit, we talked a lot about medical treatment, but the, the psychosocial aspects can be just as important. And I was talking with Dr. Tredwell, who is a psychologist about, about that. It presents lifelong issues that manifest in high levels of stress, high levels of chronic depression, educational impairments, and unemployment or underemployment. But social support systems for Sickle Cell Disease while lacking are being improved upon thanks to advocacy by groups such as yours, by the Martin Center, by the great work of Gary. Indiana has allocated more funding to Sickle Cell in this past budget than in past years, and that’s because Gary hounded me, and because I hounded the legislature, and we were able to get more funds. So I think you need to give Gary and the Sickle Cell Foundation a round of applause in Martin House. These funds are being used to develop a Sickle Cell Registry to improve data collection and identify gaps in services, to educate emergency departments about how to better treat patients experiencing a Sickle Cell Crisis, and we focused on that last year, but we’ve still got a lot of work to do, and working with adolescent Sickle Cell patients to ensure a better transition from pediatric care to adult care, which is another place where we see that there are a lot of gaps in care for Sickle Cell patients. A 2013 paper, “The Global Burden of Sickle Cell Anemia in Children,” confirms that the global burden of Sickle Cell is increasing, and it highlights the need to develop specific national policies for appropriate public health planning. And that’s why I’m so glad we have representatives from the CDC here today convening this meeting. Current national life expectancies for Sickle Cell are 48 for women and 42 for men, which is an improvement. So that’s good news. Yet, Sickle Cell life expectancy has continued to run 30 years shorter than the average population. So we have a lot of work to do. Therapeutic advances and interventions are helping extend the life expectancy, as I mentioned, of people with Sickle Cell, uh, Disease, but it’s sending adult patients into a void where there are few physicians prepared to treat them. And, and Dr. Hooper and I were just talking about the fact that we can’t rely on producing enough specialists for every patient to be able to go to a specialist. We have to cross-train family practice docs, primary care docs, to be able to recognize and treat Sickle Cell Disease. I’m going to the hospital when I leave here, and I tell you, when folks come into the ER, when they come into the ICU, everyone thinks you’ve got to call the specialist. Well, yes, we, we were able to do that at Eskenazi, but we’re not able to do that in other areas of the state where we don’t have the resources, and we need to help create the, the resources so that all patients can be treated appropriately. Dr. Lawrence Smith’s, um, 2005 paper, “Sickle Cell Disease: A Question of Equity and Quality,” states that “The limited evidence on the quality of Sickle Cell Disease Care suggests that significant gains in clinical care for Sickle Cell Disease have not been uniformly distributed.” I could not agree with that statement more. I was at the CDC just last week at a health equity, uh, conference, and for those of you, most people here know this, that there’s equity, there’s, and then there’s equality. Equality is giving everyone the same thing. Well, that doesn’t help if you’re shorter or starting off from, from behind where everyone else is. Equity is giving everyone what they need to succeed. We haven’t even gotten to equality, much less equity, in Sickle Cell Disease, so we’ve got a long way to go, and I think it’s a perfect, perfect, um, paradigm in which to, to look at Sickle Cell Disease is from the health equity viewpoint. From a medical point of view, um, many medical schools do not place enough emphasis on Sickle Cell Disease, and this leaves many healthcare providers inadequately prepared to treat patients. As I mentioned in, uh, in my discussion with Dr. Hooper, 20% according to a paper of family practice physicians feel comfortable treating patients with Sickle Cell Disease. Family practice docs, in turn, as primary care docs, are supposed to be able to take care of everything. So if 20% feel comfortable, that means 80% do not feel comfortable. Eight out of 10 doctors, uh, primary care doctors do not feel comfortable treating patients with Sickle Cell Disease. That is a problem. That is a huge problem. A research article, uh, I’m sorry, um, “Majority of Sickle Cell Disease Patients Do Not Have a Medical Home and Do Not Receive Optimal Integrated Care.” That continues to be a problem, which again is, is a downstream problem from the fact that we don’t have enough providers in the first place. So again, trying to, trying to get more people comfortable and trying to provide medical homes for people with Sickle Cell Disease. And then finally, the growth of our immigrant population is of concern because many of these immigrants come from countries where they don’t do screening for Sickle Cell Disease and where the trait is prominent. So they’re coming to our country without ever having been identified, and this is a problem. This is a policy problem because when we go to the State House, everyone says, “Well, we already do screening for everyone at birth. Why do we need to do more screening?” Gary and I have heard this a lot. Well, we’ve got to do more screening because as more people come in, you’re going to have more folks with Sickle Cell trait, having children in the US, and having Sickle Cell Disease, so we need to identify those folks. This indicates the possibility of a growing population of Sickle Cell carriers who are unaware of their status, and thus, again, at risk for producing offspring with Sickle Cell Disease. So with that, I, I do want to keep it brief. I don’t want to be up here too long. I want to hear from the folks on stage, but I want to tell you, the State Department of Health, particularly under my leadership, is committed to shining a light on Sickle Cell Disease, is committed to increasing the funding that goes to Sickle Cell Disease, and is then committed to increasing the networks that are available amongst providers, amongst, amongst the community, amongst, amongst policymakers to help support the Sickle Cell Community. And with that, I say thank you very much, and I will turn things over to my good friend, Dr. Kane, who’s going to give some remarks from the Marion County point of view.
Thank you very, very much, Dr. Adams, and you absolutely are correct. Uh, the State Department of Health has done more for Sickle Cell since you’ve been there, um, than they have in decades, and we thank you for that. I would now like to invite Dr. Virginia Kane to the podium for some welcome remarks. Dr. Kane has been serving our community as Executive Director of the Marion County Health Department for many years, and we are happy to call her our friend, too. Please give Dr. Virginia Kane a very warm welcome. Dr. Kane?
I’m just delighted to see so many faces out here and, uh, is it this mic or this? I’m just delighted to see so many faces out here. You know, Sickle Cell, um, is going to face, especially in the state of Indiana, a lot of challenges, uh, in the next, um, couple of years. And the reason why this Town Hall meeting is going to be so important and so critical is, we are facing a opioid dependence problem where it’s on the rise. And so, as a result of that, when we have our Sickle Cell patients going into the emergency rooms, and some of them seeing doctors who don’t have the expertise, when they are experiencing a pain crisis, it will be very difficult for us to get the necessary treatment we need in order to manage our Sickle Cell Disease. And then sometimes we get labeled as having drug-seeking behavior, you know, um, and that’s a terrible, terrible burden when someone is feeling so sick and they desperately need that help, and they’re having a health professional not have the level of expertise or the training in order to know how to manage Sickle Cell patients. So this meeting is important in several ways. We’ve got to learn how to do strong advocacy. We’ve got to demand that as we go to these healthcare systems, that that training and that expertise is there. They need to be able to document that the folks that we’re seeing know how to manage our Sickle Cell Disease. Secondly, um, we’re managing over 300 Sickle Cell patients here, but do we know how many out there who have the Sickle Cell trait and they have no idea, no clue about that? You know, a lot of times, when you have Sickle Cell, you start and develop these symptoms at five months of age. How can parents be educated to recognize these things early? And I spend a lot of time working with the NCAA in sports endeavors, and that we continue to have players who in sports, who are never screened or tested for Sickle Cell, are dying on the field unnecessarily. Lives that are taken away from us. So I want to applaud, I see a number of faith-based individuals here, civic organizations, healthcare delivery folks here. Uh, what a wonderful, outstanding panel that you have here, and with the top experts with Sickle Cell, um, coming to our, um, our, um, our gracious city, and please spend a little money, too, while you’re here. It helps a little bit with our health department, uh, resources. We want the strong advocacy here, and we’ve got to advocate for funding, we’ve got to advocate for research, we have to be smart enough to know where these dollars come. And one of the major areas that these dollars come from, believe it or not, also is the Centers for Disease Control. So we got to keep our eye on, are they getting the necessary money they need to get in order for it to come down to the state and come down to the local levels, you know? So we have to be very effective in what we need in order to make this community, um, safe for our young generations and for our adults. Help us do that. And I just commend Gary and his staff and the Martin Center Sickle Cell for taking this leadership role, and this is the first critical step. I met yesterday with the Black Ministerial Alliance, and they tell me they’re doing a Sickle Cell Initiative with all of the major churches. I said, “Get out of here.”
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Ladies and gentlemen, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has expressed an interest in listening and learning more about Sickle Cell Disease and the impact it has on patients, their families, and our community. And I put emphasis on listening and learning because those are the exact words that came from my first discussion with Dr. Craig Hooper. So I’m so pleased that they are here with us today. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Craig Hooper, the Director of the CDC’s Division of Blood Disorders. And upon the conclusion of his presentation, I believe Dr. Hooper will introduce Mary Houlihan, a health scientist with the CDC’s Blood Disease Division. Please give Dr. Hooper and Ms. Houlihan a very warm Indiana welcome.
I’m really, really happy to be here this afternoon. You know, I’ve heard a lot about the Martin Center. You know, I’ve read us, read some Gary’s works that he’s written, you know, shows Gary’s very insightful, and he’s really keyed in on some issues which has faced this community. So both myself and Dr. Houlihan, we jumped at the chance to come, as he said, to listen and to learn, and to share with you a little bit what we’re doing at CDC, why we’re doing it, and what we’ve done in the past and going forward. I’m not going to bore you with details, I just want to give you, you know, a snapshot of what we do. You know, let’s start with public health. You know, sometimes it’s, to me, the simplest definition, definition of public health is we want everyone to wake up healthy. We want everyone to go to bed healthy. You know, it’s that simple. Health is what we’re all about. When I say wake up healthy, go to bed healthy, inherent in that is prevention, healthy lifestyles, and so, and so forth. So just think of the sunset and sunrise that we all want to see every single day of our life. And we want to do that throughout the whole lifespan, from the day, even before you’re born, you know, prenatally, from the day you die, we want to work to make sure everyone is healthy. Everyone is healthy. That’s the key word. We work to make sure you’re healthy, to see the sunrise, to see the sunset. Throughout the lifespan is a challenge. We all, we all get older, we all get diseased, we all get things that happen to us. And for those who live, for those of you who are living with Sickle Cell, you know, the challenge is even greater as you live longer, you don’t get chronic diseases unrelated to Sickle Cell. You know, hypertension, kidney disease, you know, you know, the run-of-the-mill chronic diseases. How can we help you manage those chronic diseases as well as Sickle Cell? What can we do to reduce the complications? And when you think about Sickle Cell and other blood disorders, just thinking about our five core blood disorders that we work on at CDC, these are hemophilia, von Willebrand Disease, commonly known as bleeding disorders, thalassemia, Sickle Cell, and venous thrombosis. One out of 76 Americans have one of these, and many have more than one. You know, that’s a fairly impressive number when you’re thinking about five blood disorders, which most Americans have neither the nether heard of or think that are rare. You know, some of you may be surprised at this number, but what drives this to one out of 76 is von Willebrand Disease, a bleeding disorder, which is about 1% of us have some manifestations of that disease. And I use the word “core blood disorders” because our division at CDC has worked on these five ever since the mid-'70s. For the first 20 years, say from 1970, say through the early ’90s, they were mostly lab-based. Now, some of these are program-based, and we still do have a lab component. So how do we do things in, in our division? You know, we have the public health concerns, uh, such as Sickle Cell, and then in our division, we have these activities. We have surveillance, we have laboratory, we have epidemiology. And all, all these work together along with your outside groups, such as your specialized health centers such as IHTC, our end-community-based organizations such as the Martin Center and others, and we all work together to translate what we’ve learned into reducing the complications of bleeding disorders. I mean, this is the key word. You know, as Gary said, and as I said, we got to work together. It’s not just us, it’s just not you, it’s how can we work together to reduce and prevent the complications of bleeding disorders? And the major, and the major cornerstone, how we do that, is surveillance. And Dr. Houlihan will go in more detail about this in her presentation, but essentially, surveillance can be defined as this. We collect data through surveillance programs, which means we ask questions to get information, you know, about your lifestyle, you know, and so forth. And, you know, we, we don’t collect information that we can, you know, some people say, “You’re doing surveillance, you’re going to spy on us.” That we do not do. We want information about your healthy, about your health habits, so, and your medical conditions, so we can develop programs which will prevent complications. So we do the analysis, once, once we get the information, we do the analysis, then we develop public health interventions, and then we implement these interventions. And when we implement, there are the, you know, clinical treatment centers and networks, and also the community, the community-based organizations will help us get those message out, messages out. And then at the end, we reduce complications, and we have reduced medical outcomes, adverse outcomes. That is where we want to be for Sickle Cell. Now, here’s a, here’s a really good model, uh, that we’ve worked on, you know, for, you know, close to 30 years, and this is hemophilia. Again, we, here’s our CDC main activities, we worked with hemophilia treatment centers, we worked, again, with the community-based organizations. I keep coming back to here, these are critical. We all work together, and we developed, you know, programs which would help, you know, reduce the complications of hemophilia. And it’s, and it’s been, it’s been, it’s been effective. You know, it’s not been perfect, but everybody has worked together because we have one common goal in this program, is to reduce complications of hemophilia. And to give you an example of how things worked, the average age of death in hemophilia in 1999 was 49, today at 64. So us working together increased, gave that 15-year increase. Now, in Sickle Cell, we want to do the same now. We, we, we just can’t wait. And one way I think about this, I mean, this is just kind of me, you think about a song, and I think about a song by Whitney Houston, “A Moment in Time.” And I think that’s really important for Sickle Cell. We need to give the community their moment in time so they can be who they want to be. And that is about what public health is all about. We all want our moment in time. We all want to be healthy. And for Sickle Cell, we can, we can’t wait. We don’t have a moment to lose. And it’s really important that we all work together to make that happen. You know, there’s many ways to make that happen. You know, one way for hemophilia, the way this was done, this was started back in 1976, it was a regional approach, and they developed the hemophilia treatment centers, and they were divided into regions. And this is one way you can approach Sickle Cell, you know, a region, a regional approach. And it’s been, and it’s been effective, as I alluded to earlier. And what all this does, it leads to, at the end of the day, I call a bridge to the cure. Public health, we’re about prevention, we’re about reducing complications. You know, we, we really can’t do a cure, but what we can do, we can give you a bridge by identifying risk factors, preventing complications, we can increase your quality of life that will, that will, that will make it easier until you wait for a cure. And we’re, and we need that bridge. That bridge has not been constructed for any blood disorder. And for Sickle Cell, it’s not, we don’t even have the, the foundation laid there. And that foundation has to be laid, and the foundation has to be laid now. And the way I look at it, you know, you lay the foundation now, but you work on medical outcomes now. You can’t wait and do one then the other. You have to take a parallel approach. Foundation for Public Health, but now work for medical outcomes, and that includes the whole spectrum of the medical care. So what are we doing down at CDC in our division? You know, we’re, we’re trying to establish blood disorders as a public health priority. We need your help. We need the help of the community. You have to talk to your policymakers, this is really important, and you need to tell them why it’s important. You need to be creative. We want to minimize complications. And the outcomes that we want to reduce, you know, it’s simple. We want to increase your quality of life, and we want to increase life expectancy of people with Sickle Cell. We want everybody to live a normal lifespan. We want you to be healthy, and this is our goal for Sickle Cell. And again, we need your help to get there. Here are some of the things, uh, that we’ve done at CDC. We, you know, Mary and others have worked with various organizations to create a Sickle Cell trait toolkit, and that’s on our website. Uh, you know, you know, Mary and colleagues recently published a paper, you know, on, you know, another way to look at mortality and Sickle Cell using a surveillance system. Mary has worked with APHL and, and created a document on some lab techniques for Sickle Cell. So the, these are some things that we’ve done, you know, on, on the shoestring budget. Something else, uh, that Mary has done, uh, you know, Mary has got some funding to start a surveillance program. And it looks really good, and what she’s going to do the next few months, explain to you what this surveillance program is all about, you know, it’s predominantly based in California.
While it’s switching, I want to emphasize, I want to point to you all heard about that. When you go down there, they are as siloed as anyone else, and it’s not their fault, but they get their funding from Congress. And so, they can only do to an extent what Congress... And so, they can only do, to an extent, what Congress funds them to do. So, people ask, "What can the CDC do for us?" Well, what can you all do for the CDC? You can reach out to your legislators and say, "We need to make sickle cell a priority." Same thing for the state. I have a $300 million budget. Less than 10% of that budget comes with zero spending attached. I mean, 90% of my budget says, "You have to spend, thou shalt spend this money for X or Y or Z." And sickle cell is not in it. Hasn't been in there for a long time. So we need you all to talk to your state legislators and say, "This, we need more money allocated for and spent for sickle cell disease." So that's why you're saying, "Ask, ask, ask." When we say talk to your policymakers, Dr. Hooper and I, we're implementers, but when we say talk to people, we really need to talk to legislators who allocate the funding so that we can do the work that we're doing on their behalf.
So thank you so much for having us. And Dr. Adams, I would love to invite you to come around with me everywhere that I talk and give that exact same information and help people understand really the challenges with the work that we're doing, but also the area for opportunity of how much more we could be doing. As Dr. Hooper said, most of the data that I'm going to provide you with today, I wanted to show you an example of what can be done. We currently are doing this work in California. With additional resources, we have the opportunity to do this so many more places in so many more states and to understand what is going on in the lives of so many more individuals with sickle cell. So again, I know Dr. Hooper mentioned this definition of surveillance, but I'd really like us to take a little bit closer look at what I've highlighted in different colors. And the reason I'd like to do that is we are at the beginning of this definition currently with what we're doing in sickle cell surveillance at CDC. We're looking at systematic data collection. We're beginning the analysis and interpretation of health-related data, and we're thinking about planning and implementing and evaluating different systems of care. And so the way that we're doing this at CDC, and this is really unique from what is currently undergoing, other places are really what has been available to do in the past, is we're working with state health departments to collect information from a variety of different data sources. So the work that we're doing is not direct interaction with patients. This is not patient surveys. This is using information that already exists out there and pulling all of that information together to really learn about what is happening with each individual patient living throughout the state. And so in California, the data sources that we're using, you can see them up here, we have information from newborn screening, from death records, from state Medicaid, from the emergency department, from hospital discharge, again, covering the entire state. And if you look at the diagram of the different circles, it shows you why it's so important to collect information from all of these different places. So each of the different circles in the diagram represents one of those data sets, and you can see that none of those data sets contain information on every single individual. And that's why we have to coalesce this information and pull it all together so that we really do have that broad picture of everyone, not just those patients who are being seen in specialty care centers, but also those patients who are receiving the majority of their care in the emergency department. Not just those children who were identified by newborn screening, but also those adults who were born before newborn screening was implemented, or who moved to the state at an age later than newborn screening. So it really is a combined effort of all of these different sources that enable us to have a better and more clear picture of what's truly going on. And so the next couple of slides are some examples of what surveillance data can provide for you, and I'll try and explain why it's so important and why we need to continue doing this. So here's a picture of the different counties in California and where the babies with sickle cell disease are being born in those counties. And the reason that this is so important is that you can see that there are clusters, the darker blue counties where the majority of babies are being born, but really, about two-thirds of the state has a county where there are children living with sickle cell disease. So it's not just the large cities. It's really the entire state that's affected by this condition. And what people can do with this data is, this is something you can take to a state legislator, and you can say, "People living in your district are affected. You need to do something about this." The challenge here is, we can see where all of these patients are being born, but if we were to overlay where all of the doctors who knew how to treat these patients were, it would not match up, and that's really what we need to change. So here's a graph showing the number of hospitalizations. And what I think is so important here is the blue is showing that in a one-year time period, there are a lot of patients who don't go to the hospital in that one-year time period. But if you look in the red and in the purple, you also see that there are a lot of patients who go to the hospital a lot. They're going five, six, seven, 25 times a year. That resounds with people when you tell them that information that aren't used to thinking about sickle cell. If you talk to someone and said, "Can you imagine your child going to the hospital 20 or 25 times a year?" If you can show them that this is truly happening to real people, it makes a difference. And this graph has not been published yet, so it's not in the best condition, but I think it's so important and it's so telling. Each of these different rows is a different individual living with sickle cell disease in California. And this is the number of times they go to the emergency department or to the hospital. And so if we look about midway down, you see there are some rows that just have one or two blips on them over this time period. Those are people who go to the emergency department or the hospital once or twice. But then you see people who look like they have almost an entirely solid, continuous line. That's one person in all of the days in a year or two that they spend either in the emergency department or the hospital. That means a lot. That means a lot to the insurance companies who are paying for this care. That means a lot to the families and the individuals who are experiencing this personally. This means a lot to the healthcare providers who are taking care of these patients. This is information that really makes a difference when you can show it to someone, and that's why surveillance is so important. It's not important so that we have data just for data's sake. It's important so that you can take this data and go have conversations with people and show them true, hard evidence of why there needs to be changes in policy. I'm not forwarding. Oh, could I hit something? Hold on. No. (Audio loss). Can you do any of this? It was. (Audio loss). Hmm. (Audio loss). I think I can make one more slide. I can talk.
Try it again.
It's okay. Let's just go back, because this is my last slide, too. Okay, so we're going to do it without a slide?
No, no, it's something with a computer.
(Audio loss). Okay. So here, this is really important. I think this is, this goes to why we're doing all of this data collection and all of this surveillance work. So this is from a recently published paper looking at the number of sickle cell disease deaths. And if you look at kind of the medium gray line and the dark gray line, that's information that was available in the past. And the light gray line is what we've now been able to understand and have more knowledge about with our surveillance efforts, with using all of those different data sources. And what I would really like you to key in on, although it's difficult to see, is look at those older age groups on the right and those light gray bars. What we now know, there are a lot of people in those age groups. There are a lot of people with sickle cell disease living in those age groups. And what's so important about this is, exactly as Dr. Hooper said earlier, is people who live to those age groups with sickle cell disease have all of the same issues that people that live to those age groups without sickle cell disease have. And we really need to make sure that our healthcare providers understand that, that they're not just looking at the sickle cell complications that someone has, but also all of the complications that a human being has. And so I'm just going to bring this full circle back to that surveillance definition. And as I said at the beginning, we're working hard on the beginning of this definition. We're collecting the data. We're analyzing it. We're thinking about ways to use it. But what we need to work harder on is the end of this definition, and that's really where we need to rely on you and to partner with you so that you can help us with that. We need this information to be translated so that priorities can be set, and so that public health policy can be informed, so that real changes can be made. There's been cancer surveillance systems implemented. There's been surveillance systems for so many chronic diseases that have enabled better care. They've enabled better cost reimbursement. They've enabled more providers to be trained and more facilities to be established for this care. That's what we need to do with surveillance data. We need to translate it and really make differences in policy. So thank you.
(Applause). And one of the things that I think has plagued the sickle cell community over all of these decades is that there has been this sense of isolationism, of not letting people know you have this disease. And as I speak to people these days, I try to put it in a different context, and I want people to understand that people have a lot of things that they care about, and they care about things that mean something to them. People that you know if you have sickle cell disease, and if they don't know you have sickle cell disease, why would they care? But if they do know that you have sickle cell disease, they will care. And that's important. I would like to ask those of you who have sickle cell disease to please keep that in mind. This is a big burden on the families that have sickle cell disease, and it's so great that we have people talking now. Dr. Hooper, you said, in a couple of times, you said something about, "We can't wait anymore." That is why we have named our 2016 Indiana Sickle Cell Conference, "Now Is the Time." So thank you for the references to time, because that's really, really important to us. If I could, I would like to ask Camille Ware to come up and join me on the stage. Camille is the 2016 Indiana Sickle Cell Advocate, or Ambassador, excuse me.[1273.42][1273.42](Applause). Camille, would you just say hello to the crowd?
Good afternoon.
Tell them who you are and what you do.
My name is Camille Ware, and I am the 2016 Martin Center Child Ambassador. And I'm the face of the Martin Center. And I want to try to advocate to people my age about sickle cell.
And you go to some medical magnet school?
Yes, and I go to Christmas Addicts Medical Magnet High School.[1303.24][1303.24](Applause).
Thank you. It's really important for us to have a face. People connect with people, and we believe that Camille embodies the future, and we'd like people to get to know her. And we're very grateful that she has agreed to serve in this role, as did last year. Taryn Cavalier, would you please stand up, Taryn? She was our ambassador last year.[1331.01][1331.01](Applause). I would also like to take this opportunity, before we move on, because tomorrow is our big day with the conference, we do have a number of our conference speakers here today in attendance with us. And if you would, would you please stand up, everyone that's speaking tomorrow at the conference?[1383.88][1383.88](Applause). And keep standing, please.[1387.53][1387.53](Applause). I'm going to call out your name, and I'm going to ask you to raise your hand so people can get to know you, just in case you're going to be coming back. But these people are hand-selected because of their knowledge and their compassion for sickle cell disease. And that's what we try to do. We want people with compassion to be involved with what we do. If you don't mind, Dr. Julie Cantor will be giving a presentation tomorrow. Dr. Monica Kurana will be giving a presentation tomorrow. Dr. Brandon Hardisty will be giving a presentation tomorrow. Mary Moore will be giving a presentation tomorrow. And Marcia Treadwell will be giving a presentation tomorrow. And tomorrow's keynote speaker, who we are very fond of, is Dr. Wanda Whitton Shurney.[1431.11][1431.11](Applause). And now it's time to hear from some courageous and talented sickle cell patients, each of whom carries the additional responsibility of serving as patient advocates. I am sure that you will soon agree with me when I say that they tell their stories well. Seated on our patient panel today are Darlene Ransom, Anderson Cavalier, William Blunt, Julie Daniels, and Lena Harvey. As well, we will have presentations coming up from Ms. Subay Martin and then Dr. Emily Meyer. But before we get there, just so you can connect, Sharon Hatcher Hutchinson, who is also one of our patient advocates, was going to be here today. And she texted me a while before we started and said, "I'm sorry, I'm hurting. I can't make it." Now, why I'm saying that is because I want you to put that into a personal perspective. Sharon has been looking forward to doing this for five months, and she can't be here. Think about that. So without any further ado, I would like to first ask Ms. Darlene Ransom to please say a few words. Darlene?
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Darlene Ransom. I'm 62 years old.[1535.11][1535.11](Applause). I've been a sickle cell warrior for all my life, basically. I have SS, I do have a full-blown sickle cell disease. And my story is, you know, I've been fighting. I'm a fighter. And it's true that the older you get, the worse it does get. I was one of those, like, "Ah, I'm gonna be okay." You know, I went through not being sick in the hospital so much until when I got older, I started being sick more and in the hospital quite, you know, quite often. I just recently was in the hospital this winter, in there for over a month. I got out of Christmas Eve, and it was, it was a heartbreak. And then even after I got home, I still was suffering. We go through things, you know, and I'm constantly talking about education and awareness of sickle cell. We, there needs to be more education in the hospitals, the doctors, the nurses. I'm in there trying to get well, but I'm in there trying to educate them on how they can be. And that's, that's, you know, it shouldn't be like that, you know? And then they tend to want to get, kind of get upset when you do it, you know? Well, you're upsetting me. I can't be up under stress. I'm trying to go home. Now I got to stay a couple more days, because you're gonna stress me out if I can't get my medicine, you know? Sickle cell is not like, they come us into a category with everybody. It's, and I keep telling them, it's not, I understand cancer, you know, and all the other diseases, but sickle cell is a type of pain. If you don't get on top of it then, then it's gonna be a problem. Don't come in there giving me a pill 15, 20 minutes later when I called you, and then you want to try and give me a pill when I need a shot in order to get this pain back to the point, then you can give me a pill. But then there's another problem when you come out. I face this time a serious issue with withdrawal because of the high level of pain I had, and because of the high level of medicine, pain medicine, I had to have, which this is, I've never experienced before in my life. Any of my doctors will tell you, I have never been on a lot of pain medication, or even taken a lot of pain medication, so my body... I wasn't on it.
You were not.
I did all that talking. I wasn't on it.[1715.51][1715.51](Laughter).
I heard you.
I didn't.
Don't start over, though.[1719.51][1719.51](Laughter). I heard you.[1721.51][1721.51](Applause).
I did five more minutes on top of that. Okay. But anyhow, the symptoms with withdrawal, and I told Gary, I'm gonna start advocating about this now. This is gonna be because I went through it. And I believe that we go through it a lot of times and don't realize we're going through it. And it hit me so hard this time till I just about gave up. And I've never, like I said, I've never experienced it this time. It wasn't that I was painting. I was going through withdrawals. And I see why, you know, those that are addicted junkie, actual junkies, when they go into rehab, a lot of them don't make it and go back in, go back out to get the drugs. And that's what's happening with a lot of us. We'll go back into the hospital just to get the medicine, the pain medicine, not realizing that we're going through withdrawals. And a lot of times, you know, and then they do label us as drug addicts. And it's hard for us to, you know, when we ask for... hard for us to, you know, when we ask for pain medicine. I've had nurses that just literally don't even answer my call for pain medicine, because they're telling you, well, you don't need it, or you just had it, or you just, no, you know? And so, it's, it's an issue that we deal with, that we need, it needs to be brought out. My life with sickle cell has been, I call it a blessing, I don't call it a curse, it was a blessing. It's a learning lesson. You know, we try, we, we want to live just like everybody else, but we have to know our limitations. I didn't get, live to be 62 and not know my limitations. And so, therefore, at that time, they didn't know much about sickle cell. They diagnosed me with some leukemia, everything, before they actually found out, I was in a coma, near death, before they found out what I had. I had to learn how to walk all over again at the age of two. After that, I was in and out of the hospital constantly. I would, I would go into the hospital on weekends, and I would come home on the weekends, and have to go back in on Sundays, kicking and screaming, because I didn't want to stay in that hospital for a whole week or however long, you know, because they didn't know what I had. So, when they finally figured it out, they took me and ran all kind of tests and found out it was sickle cell. But even back then, they didn't know how to treat it. As far as pain, the only pain, medicine I had, the doctor told my mom to give me a drink of gas, a Mogan Daya wine every day, and I guess that's why I don't like liquor now.[709.12][709.12](LAUGHTER). Eat liver, didn't like liver. Eat beets, didn't like beets, you know? Or either when I'm in pain, I'm crying, so my mom didn't understand, or my parents didn't understand, so they're like rubbing my body to release the pain. That's the only kind of pain medicine we had. I didn't have any, you know? So, at that time, you know, it was hard, you know? So, I came up, I did, I've done some of everything, I'm a jack-of-all-trades, but a master of none. I've gotten my degree, so I consider it successful. I think I'm very successful.[749.12][749.12](APPLAUSE). And I thank God, you know, that I'm, that I'm still here, and thank you for listening to me. I still think I can get two extra minutes when I have it.[761.12][761.12](LAUGHTER).
That's Darlene. Thank you so much, Darlene.[765.12][765.12](APPLAUSE). Next is Mr. Anderson Cavalier, who is the father of Taryn, who I introduced you to a little while ago, and he also has a different take on what it's like to be the parent caregiver of a child with sickle cell disease, and in fact, he can double his experience because he has two children with sickle cell disease. Mr. Cavalier, Anderson Cavalier.
Thank you, Gary.[804.43][804.43](APPLAUSE). Hello, everyone. My name is Anderson Cavalier III. I am the father of two kids with sickle cell disease, both have SS disease. Taryn is 13 years old, she's in the 7th grade. Tanyana is 16 years old, and she is in the 9th grade. Well, actually, she's the 10th grade, I just thought I'd say that for her.[831.62][831.62](LAUGHTER).
You should have seen that look on her face.
Yes, I saw it. I am the parent advocate here. I have never shared any type of pain like these gentlemen and young ladies up here have done. All I know is that I am a parent who doesn't know what to do for their kids when they're in a lot of pain. It's kind of hard as a parent, when your child comes to you and tells you, "Daddy, make it stop." What do you do at that point? I was gonna come in and ad lib today, but I'm gonna actually read some stuff that I wrote down, that way I can kind of speed it up and be precise in what I really want to say.[868.88][868.88](LAUGHTER). Today, I am here as a concerned and desperate parent to voice my opinion and concern about sickle cell disease being treated as an invisible ailment instead of being acknowledged as the deadly painful disease that it is. While reading the paper written by Gary Gibson, President and CEO of the Martin Center Sickle Cell Initiative titled, "Sickle Cell Disease: The Ultimate Health Disparity," Gary noted that back in 2003, the American Academy of Pain Medicine identified and labeled the Pain Management Protocol for Sickle Cell Disease as disparate, chronic, and inter-episodic. I didn't understand these terms at first in relation to sickle cell, so I looked up those terms. Disparate meaning different in kind without comparison, chronic meaning persisting for a long time or currently consistent, inter-episodic meaning sporadic, unpredictable. If you put that together, you get a reoccurring, unpredictable, persisting pain that is different and doesn't compare to anything you've ever felt before. Basically, that's what they were trying to say. Today, as a parent, I am here with my parent superhero suit on to go to war for the life of my girls and all that suffered agonizing horrendous pain and sickness associated with sickle cell disease. I always come prepared and equip my basic superhero sickle cell weapons to battle those unpredictable bouts of pain and discomfort. Those medicinal weapons include hydroxyurea, penicillin, morphine, Vicodin, Toradol, rocephrine, Topramate, Augmentin, Albuterol, Ibuprofen, Acetaminophen, and Warm Pax, just to name a few. Let it be understood that these medicinal weapons only act as small maintenance and comfort protocol for a disease that has no boundaries and no cure. Every superhero should have a sidekick, but it seems like this parent superhero is alone in battle. Alone only because sickle cell disease lacks in awareness, because it has not been nationally recognized as a health disparity by Congress and those responsible for giving the parent superhero the tools needed for battle. The pain associated with sickle cell disease is only a fragment of issues that people with sickle cell deal with on a daily basis. The pain shares housing inside my child's body with ailments such as asthma and lung damage due to pneumonia from acute chest syndromes, migraines, failed organs such as the spleen and gallbladder that eventually had to be removed, high blood pressure from the constant pain, extremely high fevers from viruses and bacterial infections associated with the common cold. The pain is also accompanied by factors outside my child's body that affects their everyday life and everyday way of living, such as social anxiety because they spend more time sick than in social settings with their peers, and begin to feel left out or segregated from feeling normal. Factors such as depression with thoughts of inflicting pain on themselves and suicide because teachers and kids in school are cruel and are not aware of the chronic health disparities that sickle cell disease presents, or just simple factors such as the physical limitations that restrict the child from participating in normal childhood activities. As I prepared myself to come in here today and verbally battle on the front line for my children's life, I had at least 50 topics of concern to touch upon, but after going through all my topics, I kept coming back to two words, awareness and help, because those two words seem to be the detriment and the problem. So, today, my focus is on sickle cell disease being recognized as a health disparity. What constitutes sickle cell as a health disparity? Is it the 20 bottles of medication that I bought in here today that my child takes on a daily basis? Or is it the countless doctor visits and hospitalizations and expensive excessive medical expenses that we as parents endure? Maybe it's the 45 days per year that my daughter misses from school every year because she gets sick and is in crisis. Or maybe it's the cuts that my child inflicted on herself because she's become so accustomed to the medication, and that's the only way she can deal with her pain. Or is it the cuts that my child inflicted on herself because an unaware teacher and student told her that she would die? Maybe it's when a parent gets let go from a job because they have a child in crisis that's been hospitalized for 14 to 21 days, and they can't go to work. Maybe what should constitute sickle cell disease as a healthy disparity is the fact that when sickle cell patients get sick, they get the shadow hematology oncology floor with cancer and leukemia patients, which are health disparities as well. So, what would I like to see happen to people with sickle cell disease? I'd like to see people acknowledge that sickle cell disease is indeed a health disparity, and for those that don't think or consider sickle cell as a health disparity topic, you've either been researching the wrong information, or you've been having discussions and conversations with the wrong people.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. And next, we'd like to hear from Mr. William Blunt. William, please welcome William Blunt.[1189.15][1189.15](APPLAUSE).
How's everybody doing today? Is my mic on? Yeah, sorry.[1200.23][1200.23](LAUGHTER). So, I'm gonna be short today, so Darlene, I'll give you those two minutes back that you wanted, so just be ready, all right? So, since I knew that others were gonna do a tremendous job today articulating the challenges that people with sickle cell have, I decided to take a different approach. So, today, we're gonna play a game. We're gonna play a game because everybody loves playing games, right? All right. So, if everybody here could please stand for me. So, the game we're gonna play is called Simon Says. Everybody knows Simon Says, right? All right. Everybody loves Simon Says, right? All right, so here we go. So, Simon Says, stay standing if you are alive today. All right? Simon Says, stay standing if you feel that you are a fairly intelligent person. All right, I'm in the right place today. Nobody's standing, nobody's sitting down yet, so that's good. A little nervous. All right. So, Simon Says, stay standing if you feel that sickle cell is a real disease. Okay, very good. Simon Says, stay standing if you think that sickle cell, sorry, Simon Says, stay standing if you think that people with sickle cell did nothing to bring that disease upon themselves. All right, very good. All right, Simon Says, stay standing if you think sickle cell causes pain to those who I said, Simon Says, Simon Says, stay standing if you think that sickle cell causes pain to those who have it. Simon Says, stay standing if, Simon Says, stay standing if you think that sickle cell affects the lives of those that have it and their families. Simon Says, stay standing if you think everybody's life matters, no matter the illness they Simon Says, stay standing if you think those with, those with diseases should receive equal treatment, no matter the disease. I should have brought my glasses today, because I'm having hard, reading my own.[1351.33][1351.33](LAUGHTER). Bear with me. All right, Simon Says, stay standing if you think there's less done for sickle cell than others' diseases like cancer. Simon Says, stay standing if you think more can be done to help and support those with So, I see a lot of you are still standing, so now I ask that each of you that are standing, run and make a difference for sickle cell.[1390.65][1390.65](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, William. I'll have to remember that one, that's pretty good. Okay, next is Julie Daniels. Julie is very special to us. She spent many years working at Martin Center and had a lot of things to do with its resurgence, but she is no longer working at Martin Center, she is now a mom and wife, and she's very special, so please welcome warmly Julie Daniels.[1434.01][1434.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. I don't like following such a high bar. I asked you to set the bar low, and you set the bar high, okay. So, as everyone knows, the journey for a person with sickle cell disease is as varied as the individuals who have it. In my childhood, I didn't have a whole lot of problems. I didn't go to the hospital a lot, I would have been that person with nothing on the graph. I'd been to the hospital once in my entire childhood. My cousin, alternatively, who also has sickle beta plus thalassemia, like I have, was in and out of the hospital all the time. In college, that all changed for me. I went to Purdue University, and within one week of being in college, I was taken by ambulance to the hos, to the nearest hospital. It was a rough time trying to juggle college and life and being sick and constantly being in and out of the hospital. Over the six years that it took me to matriculate through Purdue and finally graduate, I went to the ER at least once a year. I remember distinctly the one time that I went to the ER in Lafayette, Indiana, and was asked by the nurse, "What do they usually do for you, honey? Because you're our first sickle cell patient." That didn't really evoke a whole lot of confidence for me.[1527.26][1527.26](LAUGHTER). But they did manage to listen to me and treat me well, and I was able to make it out of there, and am still here today. Thank God. So, that was my college experience, constantly trying to find rides to the hospital, trying to find people who could help me. I was blessed with amazing friends and an amazing support system that helped me get through. And then I entered into adulthood. At the beginning of my adulthood phase, I started having more chronic pain than episodic pain. I remember distinctly going to the doctor and saying, you know, "I'm in pain, I'm having pain in my hips all the time," and they're like, "Hmm, but with your type of sickle cell, you shouldn't be having that problem." I'm like, "I don't know what type I have, but I know that I have the problem." It took many years to find doctors that actually believed me and actually believed that I had chronic pain, and the chronic pain through my adulthood has come and has gone, and unfortunately has come again, and last year, it reared its ugly head again, having chronic pain and chronic pain to the point where I could no longer hold the job that I was attached to. And along with that chronic pain and not being able to work, came the depression that has also reared its ugly head several times. The isolation that comes with not working and not being able to be out amongst your peers, and then the other problems that you get when you don't have a job, like not having health insurance. Then you have to go to the wonderful marketplace, which is great that we can now get the insurance off of the marketplace, but it's not the cheapest insurance out there. I remember, or I currently, many times, will go to my doctor's office when I am feeling like I'm headed into the hospital, I try to stay out of the hospital, try to work with my doctor's office, but because it's not necessarily, or it's a great place, it's a wonderful place, I want to say that, but it's not a dedicated sickle cell clinic, so sometimes, even though you feel you need to go, there may not be any clinic chairs. In addition to no clinic chairs, if you're not feeling well, you can't necessarily drive yourself to and from the doctor's office, so then you have the additional burden of trying to find transportation, which the clinic doesn't have transportation, and so you rely on wonderful friends who can take you, or, you know, your spouse has to take off of work, therefore decreasing the income that's coming into the house. You see the cycle that's going on here. I will say that my life with sickle cell has been very varied. At one time, I was, like Gary said, I did not want to tell people that I had sickle cell. I remember my sister telling her friends when I was young, and I got extremely mad at her. Now, I tell everyone. I tell everyone that I know that I have it, I tell everyone what happens when you have it, how it makes you feel, how they can help, how they can be involved, and I know that, I appreciate you all being here today, and I think if we could get something, if there was one thing I'd say that we really wanted here in Indiana, in Indianapolis, it would be a dedicated sickle cell center with wraparound services, counseling, transportation, other services, that could help the many varieties of issues that we go.[1748.41][1748.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Julie. Last but not least, as far as our patient advocate testimonies, is Lena Harvey. Lena, if you would, take a few minutes and share your story.[1766.76][1766.76](APPLAUSE).
First, I just want to say thank you to Gary Gibson and all my wonderful friends at the Martin Center. Thank you for having this for us today. Dr. Hooper, thank you for being here. Thank you also, Dr. Houahan, for being here, taking time to his, to hear us and to listen to what we have to say. This is not only historic, but it's also a dream come true for me. This is not only historic, but it's also a dream come true for me, as well as my fellow warriors and advocates. It means a lot for us to be heard, which is not something that a lot of sickle cell patients, as well as their parents and caregivers, get to experience. It's just being heard and understood, so we appreciate that. My name is Lena Harvey. I am a level 31, wife and mom. And I have a three-year-old boy, Jackson, he's awesome. I was diagnosed in Chicago in 1985, and I'm not sure, I don't think they had newborn screenings in Chicago then, so I was diagnosed at the age of four with sickle beta thalassemia plus. Over the years, my sickle cell has touched every facet of my life, every single facet you can think of, including, but not limited to, my health, obviously, my mental health, like Julie touched on, my family and friends, my finances and credit, my employment, as well as any other part you can think up. My life, however, changed for the better once I finally started taking hydroxyurea. I've been taking that for approximately four years combined, and prior to that, I was hospitalized anywhere between three to six, seven times a year, each of those times lasting for at least five days. If you can imagine having to look at your child who is in pain and has to be hospitalized for a debilitating disease, an unpredictable disease such as this one, I'm sure any human person that has a heart would wanna do whatever it took to help their child in that situation. That child was me, and I grew up in a single-parent household where my mom was everything. She was the worker, she was the cook, she was the scheduler, she's, she did everything that she could possibly do, including be there for me when I was in the hospital. Over the past four years, since I started taking hydria, I have not been in the hospital. I have not been hospitalized, and that is a huge blessing to me and my family. It's not only a blessing because of the effect that it's had on my body and me physically, but it's a blessing because that's less money that I've had to take out of our household in order to pay for outstanding house, excuse me, hospital bills. I was asked the question by Mr. Gary, "What is missing with regards to medical treatment as well as other life issues for sickle cell patients?" I was also asked, "What would I like to see happen to people with sickle cell?" And my answer to both of these queries was basically the same thing that Julie touched on, which is, we need a comprehensive sickle cell disease-only center, a place where it is specifically dedicated to sickle cell patients and our treatment. We need a place where we can come to learn proper education about our own disease. We need a place where we can come that will be, that will be all about proactive and reactive care. A place that will supply us with the fluids that we need, infusions, oxygen, blood transfusions, pain meds, as well as any number of other options. Our surrounding states, Ohio, Illinois, and Michigan, all have at least two specialized clinics dedicated to sickle cell disease, so we're indeed playing catch-up in order to supply every warrior's needs here in Indy. In conclusion, I would like to urge you all to consider this. What if you and I, Dr. Hooper, what if you and I are the only people that care about sickle cell? What if it's just the two of us that care enough about the humans behind the disease? If that is so, then it's truly up to us to act on our impulses to help one another, because sickle cell warriors are everywhere, no matter if we are loud or quiet. I just wanted to say thank you again for everyone's time and efforts and your continued works to help make sickle cell warriors' lives better, and eventually, we can make this disease a distant memory.
It takes a great deal of courage for people to share their lives, particularly when their lives are as troubled as some of these lives are. So please, give them another round of applause. Dr. Hooper, I was contacted by Dr. Lakea Bailey, who is the executive director of the Sickle Cell Community Consortium. She was attempting to be here today, and she has an organization that has a large number of followers and members, and she actually asked if any of those people would like to share some thoughts with you because they couldn't be here. It was delivered to us by hand just a little while ago, so I'm going to give you a pile of letters from around the country of people asking for help for sickle cell. So, I really think that that's, the fact that we have people interested from around the country in what we're doing here today in Indianapolis is one thing, but the fact that people, so many people, that's a pretty big stack of letters, and that was actually done in about four days. So, I just think that that's important, and we wanted to share that with you. The sickle cell space has many unmet needs. Most often, we associate those unmet needs with patients. Unfortunately, there are multiple unmet needs in the medical arena as well. To give us a sense from the provider perspective, you will now hear from Dr. Emily Meyer of the Indiana Hemophilia and Thrombosis Center. And then you will hear by, I believe, that's Dr. Karen Moody, who is arriving right now.
I see that here. Click the back.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, they didn't help with that. And so, these people will be able to give you a little bit of information about dealing with sickle cell from the provider perspective and the unmet needs in that area, which I think will then also help to highlight the fact that there are disparities involved with sickle cell. So please, first of all, join me in welcoming Dr. Karen Moody.
Thank you, and thank you all of you for sharing your stories. It was really, it's pretty amazing for you guys to do it, open up that way. So I'm a trained pediatric hematologist oncologist, and now the director for Pediatric Palliative Care. I work at Riley Hospital for Children in Indianapolis, and I've been there for about two years. I came actually from New York City. I worked in the Bronx for about 10 years, and between that job and my training previously and my previous jobs and my current job, I have taken care of hundreds of babies, children, adolescents, and young adults with sickle cell disease. I've moved primarily into helping with pain management for children with sickle cell. I've moved out of the sort of hematology arena with my most current position, and when I was first thinking about what to share with you today, I think it's only honest to just tell you that pediatric pain management is a problem kind of globally. There is not enough data, there is not enough training opportunities, there's not enough education, and that goes from the beginning of medical school through pediatric residency, through really training to be a hematologist. In my fellowship training even, I had, you know, I was given some direction for pain management, but it was pretty limited. And so, the problem of a lack of good skill sets, expertise, accessibility, availability of pain management for children is affecting everybody that's in pain, that's a child and their family, but clearly, the sickle cell population is greatly impacted for obvious reasons. And in truth, this population may be one of the most impacted populations of this problem, because the reality is, in the terminal population, it's a short-lived issue, and people escalate drugs extremely high, but in a chronic illness, it's not really feasible to do that. So we need other, better ways to take care of pain in sickle cell patients, and we need whatever information is out there to be spread so that people have the information and can provide the information to families. And also, we need more providers that provide not only just information, but the resources, which I'll kind of get into. So, vasocclusive crisis pain and chronic pain are both very common problems with sickle cell disease, and I think the chronic pain problem, although it's much smaller in prevalence than the crisis pain, is very real, and I think not enough people know about it, and so sometimes, sickle cell patients are not believed, truthfully, that they have chronic pain, but it is, for sure, occurs. And I think we need to think about managing sickle cell patients with opioids, but very careful, so like, just enough, but not too much. You know, enough to adequately treat pain, but not so much that there's toxicity and complications, as you mentioned before, the sort of cycle of withdrawal and recurrent admissions. I think people under-recognize that very commonly. And certainly, the hydroxyurea has been huge for this population of patients, but it hasn't worked for everyone, or there's been limiting side effects, and so, you know, there's not one fix for everybody, and so we still need to be creative about how to manage patients with pain. I think in addition, there are limited data for even what types of drugs to use in pain management in sickle cell disease. So even though there's literature in adult chronic pain, it's not clear whether all of that can be extrapolated to patients with sickle cell disease, and we certainly consider using some of those medications, but we don't know, really, truthfully, what the safety profile is in a disease that is as multi-system as sickle cell disease. But there are options, right? There are topical options, and there are non-opioid options, and I think that there are even sort of non-pharmacologic, so non-drug options to consider for patients with sickle cell disease, but it is not clear that those options are presented or are readily available, or that people have the resources to get them with, if they have sickle cell disease. But I definitely think that until there is more data available, we have to try and promote some of these other interventions, and try to promote getting resources. One thing I'll mention is that there, I don't think you can underestimate the kind of basics, right, of just healthy lifestyle, of eating well, and of fostering a positive mental health and emotional support. I think, given what you can be up against with sickle cell, so there's the disease itself, which is very tough, has a lot of problems, and as you mentioned before, they can increase with age, but also there are, I think, issues, real issues within the medical establishment with being able to know what's going on with a sickle cell patient, to be able to see the picture completely, to be, to know about chronic pain syndromes, to know about withdrawal once you come off the PCA, and that it can trigger another crisis. And so there's a lot, I think, that sickle cell patients are up against, and the social pieces as well, of being sick and missing school and being different, and so because of that, a lot of support is needed. You know, I work in palliative care, so I work with families who are often facing losing their child, dying in their childhood, and I tell them, "You need a ton of support to get through this," and I think the same is true for kids with chronic illness. You need a lot of support, and the question is, where do we get it? I mean, is it peer support? Is it psychological support? Is it pastoral support? Is it spiritual support? Where do we get it? How do we make sure it's accessible? How do we make sure that everybody has access to the type of support that will work for them? Cuz it's gonna be different for everybody. And who's gonna pay for it? You know, who's gonna pay for these types of services? Are they covered? You know, so sometimes they're available, but then the insurance won't pay for them. So, it's just challenging. Some of the things I think about in helping my sickle cell patients are, you know, what kind of exercise are they doing? And, you know, a lot of times, it's difficult to engage in an exercise program if you have pain, right? If your legs hurt, you can't run, you know? But things like a whirlpool or swimming might be helpful, but do we have access to those things? Is there a way to get access to those things? What do they cost? How do you get there? What's the transportation issues? And I love the wraparound service idea with a comprehensive program, because that is truly what, what we need, if people are gonna get the help that they need. And even if you think kind of outside the box, to ideas like guided imagery, or meditation, or acupuncture, things that might help, we don't know, but maybe might be safe, again, who's gonna teach that? Who's gonna support it? Who's gonna pay for it? How are you gonna access it? I wanna mention that I was recently involved in a few studies in sickle cell disease. I've been interested in trying to study interventions for pain in this population. A very, we did a very small pilot, just looking at yoga in kids with sickle cell, and I just wanna mention that we did see some improvement in pain, but some of the quotes from the kids were about how their perspective shifted. So they would say things like, "I still have the pain, but I'm okay with it now," or "I'm not bothered as much," or "I can face my day a little better," or "But I feel much more relaxed." And so, when I think about pain, there's always sort of pain and suffering, right? There's pain and suffering, and I think you have to intervene on both levels. So we need interventions that will sort of physiologically target pain, and we need interventions that will target the sort of global suffering, the suffering of the body, but the suffering of the mind, the suffering of the social life, the suffering of the emotions, the suffering of the spirit, all those things that happen when, when you have pain. I mean, chronic pain affects kind of everything in a person, or can. So then we moved on from that to do a prospective study of yoga, and we did it as a randomized trial, looking at using yoga as an intervention in the acute crisis setting. We did this study in New York City and, with 75 patients. We randomized them to get either the yoga or for them to listen to a Nature Sounds compact disc, and we had a hospital-wide pain management protocol, so everybody sort of had the same pain management protocol, but the only difference for our group of patients was whether or not they also received yoga or the Nature Sounds. And we did find that the yoga seemed to help with even pain scores statistically, and like I said, the sort of subjective perspectives of patients, reporting that they were able to maybe make a little bit of a separation suddenly between the pain and the suffering. So, I mean, it was promising that maybe there are things that we can do that can be learned, that can be done at home, that then families can teach each other, that can be practiced, that won't necessarily be another medication, and things that can be done so that people can feel that they have more skills to manage their own illness. One of the interventions in the chronic pain world is cognitive and behavioral therapies, so ways to reframe thinking about the disease, ways to modify your activity, because as you know, you have to really kind of respect the signals your body sends you with, "Are you doing too much?" And although I think those are good interventions, they haven't been studied much in sickle cell, and the ability to find providers and to find insurance payment for those resources is extremely limited. The other thing I'll just mention sort of before I finish is that, kind of going back to the opioid issue, is I was also involved as a co-investigator on a recent study looking at kind of optimal opioid dosing in children with sickle cell disease admitted for vasocclusive crisis. And actually, what we found, and this will come out in the next few months, is that you can actually use less opioid, but have it really driven by the patient. So the patient really kind of informs you what they need, and you can use less, and you can get people out of the hospital faster and have less complications with hypoxia and acute chest syndrome and prolonged hospitalizations, but still have good pain control. So I think, I think we're learning in, in the world of pain management and in pediatric hematology, but I think that it's been slow, and it's been a little discouraging that I think the information isn't getting out as fast as maybe it needs to for the, for the country, actually. That's really, that's all I really had for right now, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Moody. Let's continue doing the good work, please, down there at Riley Hospital. And finally, not last but not least, as far as the providers, is Dr. Emily Meyer, who has come into Indianapolis in recent times and is making a tremendous impact already. So very happy that Dr. Meyer is here with us. Dr. Emily Meyer, please welcome her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Gary, for giving me this opportunity to speak. So, just a little background about myself. I grew up in rural northeastern Indiana and went to medical school at IU. I am actually a survivor of childhood cancer, so I had Hodgkin's lymphoma when I was 17, and I got into medical school saying I wanted to be a pediatric oncologist. And I looked forward to my pediatric hematology oncology rotation when I was a third-year medical student at Riley, and I can remember distinctly that we admitted one patient with sickle cell disease who unfortunately developed acute chest syndrome. And I remember going home and reading about acute chest syndrome, not quite understanding how it was different from how it was different from pneumonia, and talking to my residents, who were supervising me, and they didn't quite understand either. And they talked about, maybe we should have grand rounds about acute chest syndrome at Riley, because we didn't really see it that often. And so, I kind of carried that with me as I finished medical school, and I ended up doing my residency training in Washington, DC, where they have a very large population of pediatric patients with sickle cell disease, about 1,200. And I can remember, my first, it was my very first rotation of my internship was hematology oncology, and I was on call every fourth night. And every night, we would have a patient who would either be admitted with acute chest syndrome or develop acute chest syndrome. And I started to think, well, I don't know that I want to be an oncologist anymore, because I really want to take care of these patients with sickle cell. I want to help them. I want to help them not be in the hospital. I want to help them live a life outside of the hospital. Because I saw how severely affected they were by their disease, and we would see the patients with cancer, and they'd come in for their chemotherapy, but then ultimately, they would be cured, most of them, of their disease, and go on, and then you wouldn't see them again. But you kept seeing patients with sickle cell disease in the hospital over and over again. And I thought, you know what? These are the patients who I really want to take care of, and I really want to help find them a cure, and help them have a cure that is available to everyone. So, my interest shifted, and I ultimately took care of those patients for 10 years before I moved back to Indiana. So, I've been back in Indiana for about seven months, and I've noticed the differences between a center that's a very high-volume sickle cell center. So, we would see patients, we would see between three and six patients a day in our emergency department at the Children's Hospital in Washington, DC. And the emergency room staff was very comfortable with managing patients with sickle cell disease who had fever, who had pain, who had pneumonia. They knew what to do when patients came in complaining of headaches. And I've been struck by the number of calls I get from emergency room providers around the state of Indiana, because at IHTC, we do get calls from all over the state, not, first of all, maybe not knowing a lot about sickle cell disease, and then, second of all, not knowing how to adequately manage the complications. And one story that struck me was when I was called by an emergency room physician up in the northwest part of the state, who had a one-year-old with sickle cell, who was having his first pain crisis. And she had given him a very small dose of morphine, and I said, "Well, you need to give him more, and this is the appropriate dose for him." And she said, "Really?" Because it was a dose that probably would knock me on my back, and maybe would on hers, too, but it's what is the dosage that's needed to adequately treat the pain. And so, I've realized that we, as medical providers, need to do a better job in educating each other to take away some of the stigma that's associated with the disease. Thankfully, in DC, I no longer heard the term "sickler," but I still hear that on a pretty regular basis in places around the country, and I don't like that word. I don't like what it connotes. People living with sickle cell is who I take care of. I don't take care of a disease. And so, I think it's just really important to educate future physicians, medical students, so that they're compassionate, and that they understand that when patients tell us that they have pain, that we believe them. And it doesn't matter what disease they have, what color their skin is, that we believe them, and we are charged with treating them like people, because that's how I would want to be treated when I go to the emergency room. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks to everyone for your patience and paying attention. We're almost near the end. So, we wanted to give you, the audience, an overview of sickle cell from different perspectives. So, you've heard from the CDC, you've heard from patients, and you've heard from providers. Now, we want to give you the perspective of the community-based organization. And as we go there, there are a couple of people here that have come in from out of town. Would you please stand up the people that are running community-based organizations that are not based in Indianapolis? Rosemary. Hi, Rosemary. Michelle Griffin, Talani Hughes, Jaclyn Robinson, and Wanda Witton-Shirney. Thank you so much. So, I would like to ask the treasurer of Martin Center's Board of Directors, Ms. Babe Martin, to speak for a moment, and she will address the unmet needs that confront community-based organizations as they try to provide caring service to sickle cell patients around the country. Babe, please welcome, Babe Martin.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here, because this is a very important challenge to our community. I came to sickle cell by way of my uncle, Cornell Burris. When I moved back to Indianapolis from Dallas, Texas, I told him I wanted to follow in his footsteps. It didn't take long for me to realize that his shoes were way too big for me to fill. But it was one snowy night that I was suffering through after being in Texas for 35 years here in Indianapolis, that I got a phone call from my uncle, and he said, "I need you to come out here. Nikki is having a problem, and they're not paying attention to her." I'm a paralegal by profession, and I took that to mean he needed me to come and translate or advocate for the advocate. So, I bundled up and I drove out, and surely, she was having a problem, but what I didn't understand was, she was at the hospital that she always went to, where her children were born, where her hematologist is, and she was having a problem getting relief for her pain. They were waiting to hear from her doctor to get permission. The night wore on, and we all were struggling with why things are not happening. My uncle is a Vietnam veteran. He has seen the ravages of war, but on his face was the pain and the helplessness of a father who really could not help his child. And what I couldn't understand is, she's at home. This is her home hospital. Why is it that she can't get the help that she needs? Actually, had one of the staff say, "Well, it is Christmas, and we are short-staffed." That's not something that you really want to hear. Through the struggle of trying to get them to understand the importance of treating Nikki's pain, my uncle ended up doing exactly what Dr. Adams said, "Advocate to your legislature." He called Representative John Bartlet to come to the hospital. Now, I'm looking at this from a family point of view. I'm not a board member at the time, but I'm looking at it from a citizen's point of view. I'm just an average person watching this, and I'm looking at it from a paralegal's point of view, and I'm thinking, something's wrong with this picture. She's at home at her home hospital with her dad, and she's having this trouble, and we're having to escalate to the state legislator? Well, the advocacy becomes important, because it showed itself in that instance. I've got a Vietnam veteran, I've got a cousin that needs help, I've got a state legislature, legislator that's here, and then next morning, yes, almost 24 hours, hospital administration comes down, because they know that this is taking too long. Forgot to mention that Nikki was also expecting at the time. To me, that would have made it even more important that she get the treatment that she needed, because she was giving life at the same time that she needed help. I started to wonder, why aren't there protocols? You have a headache, you go to the hospital, you go to the emergency room, they know what to do. You go, and you have chest pain, they know what to do. You have abdominal pain, they know what to do. But that didn't fit in this scenario, because even if there were protocols, which there were none, there wasn't anyone that was focused on her relief. So, I went back and having conversations with my uncle, and looking at the challenges of sickle cell, and said, "How can we help?" So, I started to look around to friends, and I have one of them here, Ms. Annette Johnson, who I asked to help. We started with the Zumbathon, but we had to do something. We had to start to advocate and to increase the visibility of sickle cell, which is one of the biggest challenges. As Dr. Kane said, as so many of the doctors, as Dr. Meyer, thank you so much for what you've had to say. We all have heard that we have to lift the visibility of sickle cell. It's like trying to fight the invisible man. You don't know where to hit. So, as the treasurer of this executive board, my concern is, we have to have an income coming in. We do get grants, we get help from other centers, other organizations, but there's always more that can be done. Instead of educating every emergency room staff member to have a dedicated, as Lena said, to have a dedicated treatment center makes all the sense in the world, because you can have wraparound services. I've watched the Martin Center with the 5K Walk. We bring in water, the water eventually starts to run out, we bring in income, the money starts to run out, but the need doesn't stop. And this has to be the year that this ends. I come to sickle cell by way of love for my family, and my family loving one another. Love is going to be the way that we take this battle outside of this room and start talking about sickle cell, because you have to love someone more than you are embarrassed, or you want to not share your challenge, to share it. So, as I end, I would say, advocate, speak up for the people that you love, or for people just because you do love them. Know that sickle cell is stuck. When I heard this, that there has not been a meaningful medication developed for sickle cell since its discovery in 1910, it didn't take much more to push me into advocating for sickle cell. Write your state legislators, make a lot of noise, participate, and tell your friends to participate in the 5K Walk. It is our largest fundraiser that we have. This will be our 20th year anniversary for the walk. So, as I look out to faces, I'm looking for faces that I'll say, "Oh, I saw you at the sickle cell, the CDC. You were there." I wanted to see everybody participate. But finally, if I look, to go back to the ER training, that would be a lot of training in a lot of places, but if we had specific places where people knew they could go, and they were comfortable in knowing that when they got there, that people would know that they could treat them, and they knew they would be able to receive what they needed, and then we could be proactive through that center, we will be well on our way to winning this battle against sickle cell. Thank you for your time.
I tell you what, please, give all of our presenters a round of applause. We want to open the floor up for questions, and we're going to time this. We can't go forever, but we do want to allow dialogue. That's also a part of a town hall. And I have asked Camille, our child ambassador, to help by walking around with this microphone to see if anybody has any questions. This is not the time to be shy. This is the time to ask questions. Remember our theme. Now is the time. And I'm so glad that several of the presenters have referenced that it's important that things happen now. And there are lives at stake, there is quality of life at stake, and those are the things that we're focused on here. So, Camille, would you please walk around and see if anybody has any questions? Are there any questions? Oh, come on, don't be shy. There's one back there.
I just really have enjoyed this whole thing so much, and I just appreciate everybody. But I have a question for Ms. Daniel. As a pediatrician, I've learned from every one of my patients that they adamantly do not want to share the fact that they have sickle cell disease with anybody, because they feel like they'll be treated differently. And I hear you were angry with your sister, because she shared it. Can you tell me, can you help me to help these kids get over that bridge? Because if we don't know, we can't care. And how did you do it? And when did it happen? And can you give me some advice?
Sue, I would have to say, it didn't actually happen until I was an adult. I remember being more vocal about it in college, because I had problems, and because I had to open up to my circle. I had to open up to my friends, but I still was not vocal with the masses. It actually, I think, was more when I worked at Martin Center, and when I realized how much I didn't know, and then how much other people didn't know, that I realized, okay, I need to educate myself, and then I need to make sure that everybody else knows. And I mean, I still make sure that I educate people. I tell my husband, "Make sure, if I get sick, you take me to this hospital and not this hospital." I mean, so, I think it's a matter of empowering them, and just helping them to, one, understand it themselves, because I think that was probably a big part of it, was I didn't understand. I didn't know what to share. I didn't know what not to share. I didn't know it was a genetic disorder. I mean, I just didn't know all of that. So, helping them to understand it themselves, and then just educating them on the importance of, if someone else doesn't know, they can't help you. And so, if you get in a spot where you need help, they're not going to be able to, because they have got no clue as to what you're dealing with, and where they need to go, and what they should say, and what, you know, just helping them to understand the importance of it, I guess.
Answer your question, Dr. Shirney? Are there any other questions? There was one in the back, over here. Have you got one back here? Okay. Then we'll come back over here.
My name is Michelle Griffin, and I work with North Central Indiana Sickle Cell Initiative at Memorial Hospital in South Bend, Indiana. Okay. So, I don't know who wants to take this question. This was something that happened with a patient of mine that disturbed me greatly. She's looking for a pain specialist, and she called some places, and they said, "Oh, yeah, we don't, we don't treat patients with sickle cell." My mouth hit the floor. So, I don't know who wants to take that. Like, is there anything that I can do as an advocate, as a patient advocate, as an educator? Is there anything that you all would suggest that I do to help my patient and make sure that she's being taken care of? Anybody can take this.
Is this an adult?
Yes, she is an adult.
Once I became involved with sickle cell, the assumption is always made that sickle cell does not get the attention that it should have, because it's a quote-unquote "black disease," and the disparities are inherent because of that. What I try to refocus people on is that it's a small number, and not necessarily that being the reason. But it's been said more than once in this room, that because of the connection, the assumption that drug-seeking, sickle cell, black disease is an issue, I would suggest that advocacy is going to be the only way that we start to talk about it enough to make people understand that it is a disease. make people understand that it is a disease. It's an illness, and no matter what color is on it, it still needs to be treated. So, I would suggest that maybe she not access their treatment because it's going to be less than what she would need anyway because of the assumption that goes with the question or the statement that they made.
Okay. Next question?
I did, thank you. I wanted to know if there was a specific reason for her searching for a pain center. What is her hematologist, doctor, team of doctors not getting the job done? Why is she looking?
I have to say, I was walking down the street. She is one that has a few challenges that we all know can happen. She walked all over the place, which she didn't back start to be operated into a primary care position, and was working on her hematologist as well as a family physician. So, she is in that rebuilding process. And two of us, the doctors and the primary care physician, placed it, and she was just being cold. I sat there and then we were talking, and the first they called was from the office that relayed that message to us. And we were trying to say, "Specialist, let me look at that and see if I can help you." Okay, so, next. But that's why I was looking.
Okay. I think we were all kind of wondering that, and being between doctors is a huge problem for anyone with Sickle Cell, so I understand that, you know, she is probably looking for a relief now. So, good luck. Please advocate. Do whatever you can for her.
I think you can ask something, I'll be here. You know, another doctor you may not want to hear, but I was not. We're about you.
Show, show how much I know about them. But anyway, another suggestion would be alternative medicine wellness centers. And, you know, a lot of doctors are, you know, they don't want to, but I've found that for me, it helps. And some of them are specialized in pain management. So, if that would be an alternative, you know, you might want to look into that, too.
Next question?
I'm sorry, can I jump in for two seconds? I just wanted to jump in this conversation.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm Dr. Jackson. I'm a resident physician within the IU network.
Oh, hi, Ayesha.
Hi. Good afternoon. So, when a lot of you patients and families come here to the ED, you see me or someone that I work with, and I'm glad this was brought up because this was something that I'm actually in the process of speaking with our medical directors about. So, we understand that it's an issue, and I can't officially speak for IU Emergency Department when I say this, but we recognize that it's an issue. And personally, we don't want Sickle Cell patients affiliated with the chronic pain program because we feel like it's not the same. So, someone with Sickle Cell, while it is chronic pain, is not the same as someone who has back pain or that sort of issue, and we don't want the patients and families to be grouped into that umbrella because we feel like it would not be fair. We feel like your pain will not adequately be addressed in the ED. When you are enrolled in chronic pain programs, this big stop sign flashes on the screen and alerts providers, and then all of these perceptions come into play, and we don't necessarily want that associated with Sickle Cell patients. So, that's why we're saying no, because we're still looking for other avenues and feel like that route is not the best one. So, I don't have an answer, per se, but feel like that is not the best way right now to address your pain as far as chronic pain program because it's different, and you guys know that it's different from other kind of chronic pain syndromes while still being in the same umbrella, so.
We have time for maybe one more question. Is there one more question or maybe two more questions at the most?
Yellow shirt.
Okay.
Well, hi. My name is Jennifer Denise. I actually am, Julie Daniels is actually one of my best friends, but I noticed Sabaye was saying that she was affected by Sickle Cell as a family member. My mother has Sickle Cell. My aunt passed from Sickle Cell. My best friend who's on your panel has Sickle Cell. My cousin has Sickle Cell, and I have another great friend that has Sickle Cell. So, having people around me with Sickle Cell definitely makes me feel stronger about being an advocate for Sickle Cell awareness, and as we talked about, acting now and getting involved, I know the Walk is coming up, and I know we were talking about getting involved with the legislators. I had volunteered with the Martin Center before, but I want to know right now what opportunities are there to get involved again and to volunteer with the Martin Center and making a bigger difference currently. Sabaye?
Well, as the Treasurer, I will speak to that. We would love for you to be involved with our volunteer meetings. We're having Walk meetings on a regular basis since the next big focus is going to be the Walk. We have started a new program where we are trying to do a fundraiser every month of some kind to have a constant income coming in for our use to help our Sickle Cell clients. So, please, give us a call or go on to the website or the Facebook page, see what we have on there, but the Walk, of course, is going to be the big focus. The next fundraising event that we have before the Walk, well, it'll be an event. It will be Popsicles on the Circle, and that's going to be our event to help lift the visibility of Sickle Cell. So, come on in, talk to us on our Walk meetings. We'd love to have you. Bring all your friends and get registered and register some more people. Thank you so much for asking.
Just see one of us, and I'm about to introduce the staff. You can just start talking to one of us, and we'll see what we can do. Any other questions?
Yeah. I have a statement I want to make. I kind of resent Sickle Cell being a black disease anymore because we're all mixed up anymore. Because I have a daughter that because of our great-grandmother had to have hip replacement because my great-grandmother was half-white, okay? We have people now that are half-white, fourth-white, Asians, everything. So, we need to think of it as a disease of people, not of black people. And if you notice now on TV, they're saying, there's something, the commercial they're talking about now that, "Don't worry about this, this, because it affects people with Sickle Cell." Have you noticed they're saying the word "Sickle Cell" now in a commercial?
Yeah, that's big news.
Have you noticed that?
That's big.
They're saying the word "Sickle Cell." So, I kind of resent it being a black disease anymore because we're all, we're all mixed up. Because in my family alone, I've got Asians, I've got white, I've got Indians. I didn't do it, they did it. So, we have to think of it as a disease.
Our official words that when we're speaking in health education, it's a human condition.
Yeah.
That's how we talk about it these days, and we try to inform people. You're absolutely right, Ms. Smith. Absolutely right. One more question, Jackie down here, I think. Camille?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jackie Robinson. So, nice to be here, and we really appreciate you guys coming out and talking today. So, I think this is really a call to action to all of us. Dr. Hooper, you mentioned having, that the hemophilia groups had regional organization in the state of Indiana. The CBOs are organized regionally. We've got the Northeast and Northwest combined, Martin Center with the largest population in the central, and then the Southern Indiana group. It's really important that we are completely aligned. We talk a lot about advocacy. What does that look like? How do you do it? What types of things do you say? What do you need to know? How do we teach our young people to advocate for themselves? What's the blueprint of education for them? I think having that consistency in materials and our approach to education, making sure that we're all aligned, is really important. So, I really appreciate you sharing that regional structure because it's important that we're structured as well.
Thank you. I would like to indulge just a couple more things, and then we can quit. But the first important thing for me is to ensure that you know that there is a team of dedicated, passionate people that are not only helping get the job done on a daily basis, but working to make sure that this event and tomorrow's State Indiana Conference on Sickle Cell, I would like to introduce my staff. Would you, would you please stand up, Martin Center staff, please? Stay, Ariel, Ariel, Ariel. Courtney Owens, Sherri Coleman, and Ariel Sue. You met Camille. Where is, I'm missing somebody. Tamiya, Tamiya, Tamiya had to leave, right. Ann Kente had to leave. But thank you so much for, for what you do as staff to help serve the people we serve and also to advocate like we do and to educate those that we educate and to do the thousands of newborn screening follow-ups that we do every year and things like that. We can't do it without you, so thank you all so much. Closing thought, again, thank you so much, Dr. Hooper and Dr. Houlihan. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
You did not have to do this, and I cannot tell you how much we appreciate the fact that you did. What we're trying to do is not only raise awareness, but cause action. And one thing that bothers me, I tend to sometimes go off script. One thing that bothers me right now is that we sent out three different versions of press releases to our local media over the last two months, including one just this morning, Monday, and we have not seen the media show up. This is another issue we face, is that it helps, one of the things that I hear a lot is, "Well, why don't I hear about Sickle Cell?" I mentioned that early on. And it kind of comes down to the fact that these days, media doesn't really do public service announcements like they used to. So, you have to pay, and that means advertising budget that actually we don't have. And most of your CBOs around the country don't have advertising budgets. We can get the word out if we have enough money to buy advertising. Without that, we can't get the word out. So, it's just unfortunate that the media will show up at all kinds of silly things, but they won't show up at important things. And we're talking about people's lives and people's quality of life, as I said, and those are the important things. We talk about disparity, and we certainly hope that this event today helps generate an ongoing dialogue with CDC in this area of Sickle Cell because it is desperately treated. It has been discriminated against for many, many years. And even though Sickle Cell has been discriminated against, it does not discriminate. As we said, anybody that's a human being can have Sickle Cell disease. It doesn't discriminate. We need to stop the discrimination and the disparate treatment for Sickle Cell. And we hope that this conversation today helps get us closer to the day where we have more needs being met, more resources, and more interest at all levels, medical and psychosocial. We thank you so much for being here today. We will have a reception in Pool Room B starting right now, and you are all welcome to join us there to do some networking and maybe ask some questions of our presenters. Thank you so much for being here.